Well, welcome, Bill, our interim CEO. I'm going to get call this meeting to order. It is October 22nd, just a little bit after 5:00 PM. And so I'm going to call this meeting to order.
Excuse me, Chair. I wanted to add a special slide. That's our very first slide for today that acknowledges one year since our first meeting. So sorry for going out of order, but I just wanted to include a little acknowledgement. If all of you may recall, a year ago, we had a meeting and Cody, I know you were there. So I don't know if you want to say a few words or anyone else or Bill.
No, well, I mean, it's exciting and happy birthday to us. I don't think anybody's calling in to sing happy birthday like they did for Chair Moscow. But I do love, I do love the GIF on the screen and I'm very proud of us for making it one year. So kudos to all of you.
And as is normal, I generally show up for the party. I missed the rest of it, missed all the hard work, but I came to help celebrate.
Yeah, it's a very exciting moment. Thank you, Sebastian, for reminding us that it's it's one year since our first meeting. And it, I mean, it seems like so long ago, so much has happened. But but I'm proud of what we've done so far and we have a whole lot more to do. And in the, you know, coming calendar year to just kind of moving into the end of this year and moving into next year, so many important things that we're going to be doing. So so we 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 should, we should party now, but we have a lot more work to do. So stick around and.
And we've definitely saved some work for you, Bill. Don't worry, you've got plenty ahead of you for sure.
I owe you, I owe you, so I'm on board.
He's we're definitely working hard. So let's, um, let's move to the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know if we can get a flag up. If not, I guess just face east, I suppose. Exactly. Hand over heart and please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And let's see, are there any changes to the agenda?
We want to do roll call, I'm sorry.
Let's do a roll call because we do have alternate members joining us.
Imperial Beach representative.
Or member or Director West here.
Imperial, or San Diego representative.
Here.
La Mesa representative.
Here.
Chula Vista representative.
Member John McCann.
And and Sanita's representative.
Yes, here. Should we note for the record that Bill Baber is being represented by the alternate Greg Himora? And that Steve Padilla Vice Chair Padilla is being represented by Director McCann?
Yes, I'll include it in the minutes.
Perfect. All right. And then everybody else is the the primary member. Are there any public comments on items that are not on our agenda?
There were no public comments submitted for today.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, Megan, you didn't receive any either.
No.
All right, well, let's move to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar. Are there any comments on the consent calendar or questions? Do we have any?
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
We do not.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Was that second by Director McCann?
Himora.
More, all right, I'm just starting to recognize your voices.
Director West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Himora, how do you vote?
Hi.
Director McCann, how do you vote?
Did you hear me? Hi.
Thank you. Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, let's move to item number four, which is our operations and administration report from the interim chief executive officer, Bill Carnahan.
Okay, well, we're going to sort of tag team you here. We're going to take different parts of it, some of which have been ongoing since before I came. And there's other folks right now more qualified to talk about that than me. But I'll, I'll just briefly touch on item A, the staffing. As you may recall, we, we went out to for two position recruitment, power services and regulatory affairs and compliance. We did get responses back. We put a hold on those responses pending what we're going to talk about in item five. And once we determine what the final arrangement of that is going to be, then we'll go back and see folks who may be qualified for positions in that matrix and evaluate them and decide what to do from there. So we didn't want to really get the cart before the horse here. We wanted to have the final staffing plan and organization chart and fringe benefits tied down before we really started talking seriously about new hires. So that it's just to let you know, it's still alive, but it's been on hold for a little while. So.
When we say that they're on hold, that these are still active applicants? And and we've just kind of let them know that the process is going to take a little bit longer?
Yes, that's right. We let them know the process has been delayed, but yes, they're still active.
Perfect, thank you.
I guess the next item is the power resource solicitation. And I don't know whether PEA is going to take the lead on that. Or Cody, are you going to take the lead on that? Or John, who's on for PEA?
Yeah, I believe John is on the line. Make sure he could actually.
Okay, John.
I think he's, you're ready to go, John, if you'd like to take that one.
Sure, yeah. It was John Delessi with Pacific Energy Advisors. You can hear me, okay?
We can hear you.
Fantastic. So, you know, we've been quite busy on the procurement front for resource adequacy in particular in preparation for the upcoming November 2nd year ahead compliance deadline. We knew this was going to be a tough nut to crack from the get go. And we got started quite early in this back in May before SDCP even received its its RA requirements from the CPUC. So we've conducted three separate requests for offer solicitations since May, distributed that to over 400 asset owners, power marketers, brokers, demand response providers, load serving entities and other potential sellers of RA. And purchase quite a bit of capacity through those, through those efforts, particularly the first one. And we also successfully bid into the SDG and E request for offers, which was conducted initially back in June and it continued on through September, at which point SDCP was notified that it was shortlisted for us offers. So we are working closely still with SDG and E to negotiate final credit payment terms. But I would say those negotiations are going well. So through these efforts, we've secured about 95% of SDCP's local RA obligations for 2021 to 2023. So we're, we're getting close, not quite 100% there yet. As I think we're all aware, it's challenging as a new entity trying to buy significant capacity in what's really a constrained local market in this, in the San Diego area. But I think we've made tremendous progress. Again, about 95% of the obligations are already either under contract or in negotiations. And we continue to seek offers for the remaining requirements. The SDCP's ability to comply with the requirements obviously are subject to what's available in the market and the constraints in the San Diego area. So as I said, we're not quite 100% of the way there. And if it does become necessary, CPUC rules do allow for filing of waivers for the local RA obligation. So we're still working that, but it may be necessary that a waiver is filed. If that does become necessary, that would be submitted on November 2nd along with the year ahead compliance documentation. So with or without the the local waiver, we'll still need to meet the year ahead system RA requirements in, so we're continuing to work on those. But that's, that's where we are with the RA procurement. It's still ongoing. Still have some, a little bit of time next week to to finish things off if we can. But that's the delay of the land.
So John, so you still, so we're short about 5%. And you're saying that, that, that you're hopeful that in the next week that you'll be able to, to to acquire the remaining 5% that for this compliance requirement?
I think at this point, it's, it's unlikely to, that we'll be able to find the additional San Diego area local RA. You know, I think I would say it's unlikely at this point that we'll, we'll be able to find that.
All right, so, so what, what hurdles did we, that, what hurdles did we kind of encounter that, that means that we're not able to get 100% of this compliance requirement?
It is strictly a lack of available supply. So, you know, we've asked everybody, we've asked SDG and E. And we have, you know, are in the process of purchasing everything that they have to sell us. And so there are literally no offers for local capacity.
Is SDG and E going to also file a waiver?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, they're in a position where they're selling off excess. So, you know, I can't say whether or not they would be filing a waiver, but they're in a quite a different position. Having, you know, the large chunk of their customers and load transfer over SDCP. So, you know, they're in a much different position than is SD.
John, out of curiosity, is Clean Energy Alliance going to have to file a waiver?
That I don't know.
All right, what's the standard for, for, for this waiver in terms of it's not available? And it's a constrained market and it's not available?
Yeah. I feel that we have a very strong case for it. And I don't know if Ty is on, on this meeting, but he could provide the details. But in a nutshell, you know, there's, you know, it requires good faith efforts to procure. There's even a price threshold that we've paid well and above of the price threshold that could justify a waiver. In other words, one of the waiver triggers is if you are unable to find local capacity at or below a price of $4.25 per kilowatt month. And I can tell you that SDCP has paid well above that for the supply, you know, for the RA that it has, has procured. So other parties have just stopped there and said, if they can't find supply at 425 or less, they're just going to file a waiver. That was not the, the mode that SDCP is in. SDCP is in a, you know, we want to be fully compliant. So we're facing a situation where we're just not receiving offers. There's just not a capacity being presented to us.
I can't say, I can't say that I'm not a bit disappointed because I think that we've been talking about for, for several months, for a long time, the idea that we're, we're in a constrained, constrained market. And I would have hoped to, that with less than a week left before we have to comply with this, that this board would have gotten advanced understanding and knowledge and notice of the fact that, that we would have to file a waiver. So that it's a bit, I mean, I understand the predicament of a constrained market and we're kind of at the end of the cul-de-sac, if you will. But, but, you know, this is the first time that this board is hearing this as well.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, interrupt just a second, please. I don't want to stop the discussion anyway, but some of the specifics are considered market sensitive information under the PUC rules. And so I just wanted to, you know, any specifics that John may have to provide is, could be considered confidential, given what might go on in the waiver and what SDP, SDCP may or may not be short. So I, I mean, you're happy to continue on the discussion. Just the specific information, please consider could be market sensitive.
No, thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Ryan, for, for jumping in and please, please, if I ask anything that, that is getting to that point, please jump in. And John, please curtail your, your answers if I'm not necessarily aware of all the, the, the parameters here. So John, if I'm asking something, please curtail your response to, to what is not confidential.
Chair Moscow.
Sorry, go ahead. Yeah, I'll recognize Director West. And then, John, if I think you were calling on Ty as well. So after Director West, Ty, if you want to say anything as well.
So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit. I'd like to walk, if you could, John, if you could walk me through this, this, this waiver process, how long it takes, what, what is, what is, what is the likelihood of approval, all kinds of, just kind of walk me through that. So I understand what we're getting into with this waiver.
Mr. West, I can address some of that, that response if I may. And I have a comment before I do.
Great.
And Chair Moscow alluded to this a little bit in his comment. The San Diego area is, has been constrained in terms of local resources for quite some time. It's well documented. It's, it's, you know, that, that fact has been recognized by the Public Utilities Commission. It's been featured, recognized by the California Independent System Operator and their capacity studies. It's been recognized by the PUC and their state of the RA market. We have increasingly seen across the state and not just in San Diego, a significant uptick in these types of waivers being filed specifically around local RA. This is, you know, the constraints around local RA are one of the reasons that the PUC decided to form a central procurement entity. And, and, and is overhauling the RA program. So this is a problem that's being faced by a number of load serving entities, including SDG and E. SDG and E in the past has filed similar types of waivers. Other CCA programs and DA providers and utilities have done the same. So I don't expect that we will be the only load serving entity filing a waiver coming up. I, you know, I can't say that for sure, but I don't expect so. With respect to Mr. West's question about the process, the process requires that we file a formal waiver. There, there's a detailed standard for, for granting the waiver. It includes price thresholds, you know, the showing of diligent or good faith efforts to procure the resource. And we are also required to supply documentation regarding our efforts. Our firm has already spoken with Mr. Delessi and PEA about that waiver and that process of developing that waiver is underway. The, the, once the waiver is submitted, it is reviewed by the Public Utilities Commission. And there is an opportunity for other parties to file a protest to that waiver. Looking back at previous protests that have been filed, they've, they've been almost uniformly for lack of documentation, which is a problem that we will not have. So many of these waivers are granted without incident. And given the circumstances around the efforts that have been made on the program's behalf, you know, we have a very good chance of having this waiver granted as well.
Thank you, thank you, Ty. That was excellent response. And thank you for that clarity as well. Director West, did you have further comments?
No, that's it.
All right, so I guess the one thing that I would say in addition to that is just that, that, that I think it's important for this board to have, this is our primary goal, right? To procure power on behalf of our rate pairs. And so I'd like to have more, you know, more information in the future. I don't know, John, if you and PEA can work with our interim CEO. I'd like to, you know, in some way for this board to have, you know, not, not, not immediate feedback, but just more information that, you know, that we're reaching our goals. And if we're not, you know, at least we have information to that, as to that. We're not just kind of getting it at the last second.
Chairman.
Yes.
Bill, I, I totally agree with you. I think the board, the last thing we want to do with the board is, is present surprises. And this is really a short fuse or less than about 10 days away from, from the action. And, and there's certainly a negative connotation to have to seek a waiver. I mean, I think as, as this staff, and I think PEA also would, would say that we regret, we hate to do this kind of thing because it looks like you're not doing your job. And, but I think if we can perhaps send you an outline or a summary of what happened, I think you'll, we can then be able to tell the public, we went out three times, tried to get, get proposals, got what we could get. Certainly if others are doing it, there is no penalty. I think we can actually, you know, portray the situation that actually occurred. Now, I think, you know, I wasn't here, but it seems like there could have been more dialogue as we went along and we'll correct that in the future. In fact, we have a second round of this related to system RA that, quite frankly, does not have a waiver provision. So that could have even more severe consequences on us. So we're redoubling our effort to, if at all possible, make sure that doesn't happen. And if the board is interested in more of the details, we're not trying to hide behind confidentiality. We'd be more than happy to try to set up a special call next week so that we could go into closed session and you all can get all the details that you, that you want. And we're more than happy to do that if you want to dig into that at that level.
All right, well, that was a just, that was a lot of information that you just went through. I, I think that perhaps we should talk more about a way and it, I, I just want to make sure that the board is always informed and that we're getting, you know, information, timely information. And so that we're able to make decisions. Are you going to talk, so?
Chair Moscow.
Talked about local RA. So you're saying that we, we, we may have an issue with, with system RA as well? Are you gonna, are you, are you all talking about that right now?
I'll let John address it. He, he alluded to it in the, in the agenda item. And then I think verbally mentioned it also, but he may want to elaborate within the context of, of we can't really divulge everything about it, but I think we can get a flavor of where we are.
Yeah, and I'll leave it to you guys. Once again, I'll leave it the proviso that I'm not necessarily sure of, of what and what, what, what can be said and what can't be said. So I'll rely on, we have several attorneys in this line that you're basically, you know, letting us, you know, talk, have a conversation that we can have. If it's, if it's, you know, if it's going beyond what we can say, then, then please stop, stop us. Director West.
Yeah, um, one, you know, this is, the one thing that I think is the Finance and Risk Management Committee, we are the ones who are supposed to really, we're supposed to be the ones who are finding out about this first. And I, that's why I'm a little bit, I'm as surprised as Joe is, as Trump is about this. So I'm just, I'm wondering, one, how, if this should have come out, should have come out in, in the, the financial risk earlier in the month, or was it, was it, was it so early in the month that you didn't really know? I think is, that's my first question. And then two, what do we need to do as we move forward for next year? Is there anything we can do to prevent this in the future? And before we move on to the, the next question that I think Chair Moscow has to tackle the next RA, so those are the two questions I'd like to, before we move on to the next portion that Chair Moscow asked. Was I clear about my questions or did anybody?
Bill, did you want to, did you want to talk about that? Did you want to address Director West's comments, Bill?
Yeah, I think there was a very short fuse on the information side. And I agree with you that the committee or the committees are set there to, sitting there to be able to delve into issues in more detail and get more answers that then might be able that we might be able to do at a board meeting. And so I can tell you that, you know, we will be diligent in terms of, you know, getting information out early so that you all can be a part of the process of helping to solve those and at least be prepared if there's an eventual negative to it, which in this case there is. That's, that's the biggest surprise and, and nobody likes bad news. And so I could pledge to you that we will do that. Now, with regard to the, I don't know if that answered your question, Director West, but I, I, you know, that is a commitment and that's a legitimate suggestion.
Perfect, okay, thank you. That does answer my first question. What about my second question? How can we, how can we be prepared next year to make sure that this doesn't happen again?
Maybe I should turn, turn to John first. They're, they're in the business every day and year in, year out. Can you, can you answer his question, John?
Sure, well, firstly, the, the forward requirement or the, the year ahead requirement for November actually covers the next three years, 21, 22 and 23. So the 22 year, there is no issue. There's, that's 100% covered presently. So, you know, as the, as the load will be growing through the phase out, you know, the requirements will increase again into the future. And so, you know, we still, we still face a situation where there's a limited amount of capacity in the local market. There is not an efficient mechanism to transfer exactly what you need from the utility, from SDG and E or from other buyers who may have purchased that capacity for their own needs. Some buyers, maybe in Northern California, will purchase San Diego area generation and use that for their system needs, even, even though they don't, they don't need it. You know, they don't need it for local requirements. They don't have a local obligation in the San Diego area. However, they, they may have locked up that, that capacity. So we, we have a difficult supply and demand balance situation when it comes to this local product. That's exactly why the waiver process was adopted by the CPUC. The recognition of that, in recognition of the fact that sellers can exert tremendous market power in those types of situations. And that's why even there is that, that price trigger, that price threshold that was established to, you know, provide some protection to the, to the buyers against just, you know, paying exorbitant prices. Again, we, we're not treating this, we have not been treating this as a, as a price issue. It's, it's a supply issue. That is, you know, we are, we have conducted numerous solicitations. We've been working with, with brokers active in the market. And there are not offers for, you know, for the local product. You know, we're not seeing them at, at this point. So, yes, go ahead.
What you're telling me is that I think you're getting to the point is we need more, we need more producers in our, in our local market is what you're, is, is, is that, would that be help? Would that be a way to help solve this, this problem or is it not?
Yeah, I think, well, that definitely helps solve the problem. I think that's, that is, you know, ultimately what, what we do need. You know, I will say we're seeing, we have seen less available in 2021 than in 22 and 2023, for whatever reason. And it's likely just the nature of supply contracts and what's, what's locked up, what's not locked up by other load serving entities. So it's, it is a very tight market. It's, it's not really even a market because the market implies there's some efficiency, efficient mechanism. This is very much a bilateral process. And it's, you know, a big issue is, you know, we originally approached SDG and E about recognizing, hey, you know, their customers are moving over to SDCP. Let's talk about a methodology here where the resource adequacy could follow with those, those customers. And, you know, we could work out a pricing arrangement. They insisted that they, they do a competitive solicitation. So we are one bidder among many. And, you know, thankfully, we are, you know, continuing to negotiate through that process. But it still is, is not an efficient way of making sure that the right megawatts, you know, go, go to the CCI.
Let's, I'm sorry, okay. Did that, yeah, he answered my questions there, Chair Moscow.
And I'm going to add a couple, Director.
Can I add a couple of things briefly?
Sure, Ty, can I just, Director McCann has had his hand up for some time. And then Tommy, you can go next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Moscow. I think Bill mentioned maybe having an executive session where we could be fully briefed and understand some of the legal and confidential information. And I always find that as a council member or a director, it is really best when you can find out what those. And I always find that as a council member or a director, it is really um best when you can find out what those nuances are. Uh that they can't necessarily tell you publicly. So I would highly suggest um. And I believe that Councilmember Director Padilla would agree also is if we could get a briefing in executive session so we can fully understand um this because. Again, I think you said this um very well, Chair, is that this is one of the main things that this organization does is to procure power for residents. Thank you.
Yeah, I I completely agree, Director McCann. I think that um, uh Bill, I think that that's an excellent comment, um, you know, uh so that we can get more information. And also to Director West's point, uh in terms of the future, we are expecting that um PA um and and Bill, uh you and others are are working together to come up with some strategic um initiatives. Um, to to resolve the the um, the issue with constrained market, uh and so that going forward. Um, that um that we're we're doing, doing whatever we need to do to create a market in San Diego so that we have the power that we need.
Yeah, we will do that.
All right. So let's uh, let's um, I think, John, you have, I'm sorry, Ty, you were gonna make a point.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, you know, the procurement teams for all the energy providers in California, you know, they're required to work within the rules that are established by the. Legislature and the Public Utilities Commission. Um, but but there are a couple of regulatory issues here. One of them uh is that, as you know, and John described this in terms of efficiency, but. That we don't have a process by which the CCA programs can access the utility portfolio. That's, you know, something that's being discussed. In PCIA Working Group Three, they call it, unresolved at this point. That could be, you know, a mechanism or a similar type mechanism that could help us out through um allocations. Um, and so that's, you know, if that were to advance, that may assist us um with meeting our our local capacity need or or again, something similar to that. Um, and I will also just note that the structure of the RA program um places a high value on uh natural gas uh resources. And a lower value on renewables resources, um solar and wind paired with storage, for example. And so a change in those rules could also help us meet. Some of those requirements and that's that is, you know, changing those rules is actually being discussed right now as part of the overhaul of the RA program. So I just wanted to mention that there are, you know, rule changes might assist us in this process.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it needs to be overhauled because even though we have all these requirements, we still had a kind of a rolling blackouts uh not so long ago. So obviously, it's not working. Uh, so something needs to be overhauled. Um, and so let's um. Let's go to uh back to John and John, you are um going to go further with your presentation.
Well, I I think that was pretty much the end of uh of of the presentation, honestly. Um. So.
So, somebody with uh, the Bill was alluding to system RA. So did we? Did we talk about that?
Okay, so with system RA, uh the vast majority of what um SDCP requires is is local. Um, there is uh. A a, I don't want to get too specific here, but there there are some system requirements. Um, and so, you know, that's. Less constrained because system means you can purchase it, uh you know, throughout California. Um, so there are more more opportunities there. Um, prices are quite high. Uh, I will, I will say that particularly in the in the time where SDCP is is needing the system RA. Um, so those efforts continue. Um, and I think there's uh. You know, a higher likelihood that uh those requirements can be filled than the local, the local being, you know, such a constrained area. Um, but there is still a remaining system obligation that is yet to be filled.
All right, um. All right, I guess I don't know, uh Ty, if if I can go further here, uh because I'm I'm hearing a bit of a um. Um, reading between the lines and there's 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 information missing. So um, so should I should I say that that um? Should we should we take uh Director McCann's um comment uh to heart here and just say we should have an executive um, some sort of um board closed session on this, uh because I'm just not. Necessarily hearing um.
I think that would be a good idea, Chair Moscow. Um, and I think, you know, part of the difficulty in discussing this openly at a board meeting is that the negotiations and discussions and efforts are ongoing.
All right.
Respect to with respect to system RA. So I I think that would be advisable.
All right, perfect. Um, Bill, if you could, if you could work with um with uh with Sebastian to try to schedule some sort of um. Closed session for this uh for the board directors to discuss this in closed session, that would be good.
We certainly would do that.
All right, thank you. All right. So, John, um, are you finished with your presentation?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Um, let's move on to um, I'll hand it back to our interim CEO, Bill.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, we have the policy matrix update in there. I don't know if Cody wants to say anything about that. It's pretty self-explanatory and you all have seen it before. Uh, do you want to add anything, Cody?
Uh, I mean, it's attached, and I think it's worth taking a quick look at to see the progress we're making on different policies. Um, the one, the one that's described in the Ops and Admin Report is one that's not. Uh, it's just guidelines for staff. It's not necessarily a board policy, but just to give you a a flavor of some of the things we're creating for operational structure. We've been getting a lot of requests for sponsorship and we, if you all recall from the the budget that you all adopted, we have about twenty five thousand dollars um. Designated for event sponsorship. So this is separate from other outreach we're doing. This is just sponsorship events. Um, and we wanted to have some sort of guidance to be fair and and um evaluate those requests in some sort of structure. So one of the things we put together. Working with our marketing uh firm, Civilian, and then also presenting it to our community advisory committee and getting their feedback. Um, were these guidelines. And it just helps us think a little bit more methodically about if a if a. An organization is asking us for sponsorship, we can ask some questions about um audience reach and diversity of the audience and, you know, what city they're in and and how to kind of um divvy up our money. For that. So it's just, it's really just to give you a flavor of some of the things that we're we're developing and um we're happy to share that with you if you'd like, but it doesn't require any board approval. Thank you.
Cody, how are we doing with the inclusive and sustainable workforce policy?
That is underway as well, and we will be, we presented that to the community advisor committee. Um, and we'll be doing some work on that and bringing that back to both the committee and and your board.
Okay, thank you.
Um, are we ready for item D? Any other discussions on with San Diego? I know there's some discussions about their billing system, CIS system and whatnot. Cody, you have any comments on that?
Sorry, shut myself off for a minute. Um, no, I don't, I don't think um there was much to say there. We continue to meet with SDG regularly um on this issue, and we have Calpine very heavily engaged. Um, in those discussions and we're kind of in the weeds of looking at um their system transition and our um customer enrollment to make sure that we're perfectly in sync. And when we do have an update, we will share that with the board, but we continue to work with them and meet regularly on that.
All right. So when we say that we're we're um. So are are we, when we say we're in sync, are we um, where are we at with the launches?
Oh, so the schedule remains the same. We're just looking at the types, it's really in the weeds on types of customer accounts that can be managed in each phase of the launch, and primarily it's focused on the first phase. Because if you recall, that's in March and SDG needs system is transitioning around March, April timeframe. So we're working with them to make sure that. Whoever they enroll in San Diego Community Power in March can then be transferred over to their new system seamlessly. Um, and then uh that, then their system should be ready for the next round of enrollment for Phase Two will go directly into their new system.
So we're still looking at municipal accounts um. In in March, March of of twenty twenty one, followed by um, followed by um, by any commercial industrial accounts. Um, by what the sec uh third quarter of of twenty twenty one?
In June. And and if it's helpful, we can, I think it'd be worth discussing this with you in more detail and one on an item that actually can have some in-depth discussion. So maybe we bring this back as. Um, some of the details we're working out because we can go pretty far in the weeds of different types of accounts for each phase of enrollment.
All right, uh that's that that's a fair point. That sounds good. I just want to make sure, I I guess I've always been um a bit nervous about um this uh CIS system and and its impact on our launch and. Just wanted to make sure that we're fully up to date on 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 the implications of 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 the CIS system being deployed.
Yeah, I think we all are a little bit, which is why we're having actually weekly meetings on this topic. So um we'll we'll keep you informed and maybe we could even send a memo in the interim if something comes up in between board meetings.
All right. Perfect.
Hey, Chair Moscow.
Yes.
So uh, Miss Hoven, I asked for a uh two at the last um. Board meeting we had was like a uh, something on paper that I could see timeline that we're lining up as well. We, has that been generated by a uh um SDG yet?
Not yet. We're still going back and forth on actual accounts in each phase and very much in the weeds. Once we uh firm that up. Our recommendation is to put that in writing. Um, and so we'll definitely keep you informed of that. And and I I hear you and I and I recognize that we want to document that, and I think that's in our best interest.
Good. Thank you.
Director McCann?
I don't have anything.
All right. All right, Bill, uh if you wanna continue on with your, with this item?
I always mute myself and most people like to do that to me, but I do it for myself. Uh, so.
Mike always does that to me.
So, uh Ty, you you want, you ready to make your report?
Sure am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, uh, board members, uh, as I usually do, we've included a detailed uh report and supporting materials uh in the agenda packet today. Um, I will uh briefly cover a a couple of of the um most important proceedings that we are active on. Uh, or monitoring, uh beginning with the PCIA uh trigger application. This is an uh application that was filed by SDG and E. Um, that we discussed previously, but as a reminder, um, the two thousand eighteen, the Public Utilities Commission adopted a decision governing the PCIA. Um, making various changes to the methodology, uh and also uh adopting what they called a cap and trigger mechanism. That cap uh placed limits on the year-over-year change in the PCIA uh and also included. A safety valve for the utilities, if you will, uh and if the uh, the decision provided that if the um. Anticipated PCIA revenue under collection uh reached seven percent um of the of the the total PCIA anticipated revenues. Um, that that the utilities could then file a, what's called a trigger application um to recover um, to recover the um amount that they had not been able to collect or did not collect. SDG, this is the first year that these trigger applications uh were eligible to be filed under that decision. Uh, SDG was the first utility to file a trigger application. They were seeking recovery of eight point nine two million uh dollars um. In order to bring that their um balance, uh their uh, the the specific balance they're trying to recover uh to zero. Um, you will recall that uh this, this application does not have a direct impact on SDCP. Um, but it, since it's the first time it's been filed, uh the board uh. Supported taking action on it because it's, if this cap and trigger stays in place, uh it's likely that we'll be facing more of these and we want to have a voice in how these things get resolved. Uh, especially the first time around, it's important um to do so. So uh, we've been active in this proceeding. Um, something that I did want to bring to your attention is. Uh, I think uh in the course of the past several weeks, uh PG and E and Southern California Edison have also filed trigger applications. Uh, meaning that they have substantial under collections as well in their PCIA accounts. Um, and what I think what that tells um us, and I think the one of the main conclusions is that the. The cap and trigger, which was designed to uh originally protect against rate volatility, um is not functioning as intended. Uh, the requests of the of the utilities in these uh trigger applications is to collect balances and that that will. Cause volatility in the in the PCIA. Uh, and so we are are, I think, confronted with. A question about what to do about the cap and trigger. And so there are some uh larger discussions happening about that mechanism at CalCCA uh and elsewhere. Uh, nevertheless, we we uh have been active on uh. SDGenie's application and what we've been pushing for uh is uh two things. One, we've been uh pushing for an extended amortization period. Uh, for this balance, uh SDGenie requested three months. Uh, we have requested three years, thirty six months, uh which uh would mitigate the the rate impacts. Uh, SDGenie is also um taking the position that uh in connection with this uh, this application, they are going to collect more. Of revenue from departing load customers and they are going to refund it to bundled customers. Um, however, uh. Ironically enough, many of those bundled customers will be leaving for SDCP and CEA in the middle of the year. So those refunds should follow the customers. SDGenie has said that they cannot accommodate that due to constraints in their billing system. So they are asking the commission to approve forfeiture of the of that refund. Um, that refund is is not a, you know, relatively speaking, it is not a um earth-shattering number. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, you know, CCA program customers shouldn't be punished or discriminated against for uh leaving utility service. So we are pushing back against that. Uh, the idea that the that refund should be forfeited. Uh, so uh, we are also uh active uh in the era forecast proceeding. Uh, this is a, again, an annual proceeding um that is a. Uh, filed by the utilities each year. Uh, it's where a substantial number of uh rate components are set for the next year. Uh, and it's also where the PCIA is set uh for the next year. Uh, you'll recall, due to various circumstances um around uh confidential information. We retained special counsel on this um proceeding and I I I'm happy to report they're doing a very good job. Uh, we retained uh, the program retained keys and fox uh. To to pursue this um application on behalf of the program. They along, working along with uh consultants that the program retained from a company called NewGen, uh they were able to identify about an eighty-five million dollar um error. Uh, in SDGenie's uh original application. And so uh, I will, I will just state my humble opinion that uh the money spent in retaining both the firm and the consultant have been well spent. Um, and so the SDGenie is going to be revising uh revising those numbers in November, uh coming up in early November. Uh, and then uh, in addition to that, we've been focusing on the uh eco-choice rates. Uh, we've been able to also make some progress there and and making sure that those rates are. Set appropriately relative to the the costs um that the cost of supply. Uh, and so we've been making it, making some good progress there. Uh, just to, I'll just mention that uh one other thing and uh in a little bit of detail, then I'll I'll move on uh. And conclude, but uh you you may or may not recall that uh the Public Utilities Commission was tasked by the legislature with. Um, expanding direct access to with, under a certain limitation and then, which they've already done, and then um. Looking into and studying whether a further expansion should be um, should be authorized. Um, the the Public Utilities Commission. Um, uh, came out with its study and it recommends uh that the legislature uh need, if it so desires, wants to take further action. Uh, would, excuse me, would be required to take further action, passing a bill to authorize the expansion of DA. And that if uh it was done, uh that uh that expansion or that, you know, that bill should not be authorizing an expansion of DA service until. Uh, DA providers can show compliance with the uh RPS um standards. Uh, so I I I think this was one of those cases where, you know, we could be look, could have been looking at. Um, a a potential uh, you know, expansion in DA service, which would have directly competed particularly for commercial customers. Uh, with uh, with SDCP and unfortunately, that's not going to happen anytime soon. Uh, and so we, i- if it happens at all, it would require a bill be passed the legislature and and it would it would not, based on the PUC's recommendation, would not occur until. Uh, after twenty twenty four. So it's a certainly positive news, I think, from the in looking at the um, you know, the uh interests of the program. the, uh, interests of the program. I'm sure that the DA providers aren't too happy about that, but nevertheless, I think it's, um, you know, a positive development for CCA programs. The only other thing I want to mention is, uh, that, um, SDG&E has moved forward with implementing a program to assist low-income customers or customers who are in trouble, paying their, their utility bills, uh, and, uh, called an arrearsage management plan. And if, if, uh, SDCP wants to participate in that, um, then, uh, we will have to make an affirmative, uh, notice to SDG&E. Uh, and, uh, I've discussed this with, uh, with the interim CEO and we're going to bring this back, uh, at the next board meeting to discuss the details, make a recommendation, uh, and get the, get the board's, uh, decision. So tho- those are, that, that's my report in a nutshell. Just, I guess, one more thing, we are starting to track a new rule-making proceeding over net energy metering. And so I just wanted to mention that, we'll be, I'll be addressing that a little bit more in the future. So, happy to take any questions.
Yeah, that's going to be an interesting one. Um, so do, do keep us up to date on that. Wow, you, you just covered a lot of ground, Ty, and that's a lot of information. You did it very eloquently and very concise, so thank you.
Thank you.
Go, uh, to my, my colleagues, uh, Director West, do you have questions or comments?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, um, Ty, uh, Chair Mosca hit it on the head. That was really well done and, and
Thank you.
Very focused and I appreciate that. And, um, and, uh, it's not hard to watch you when I see the waves in the background. So it's, uh, it makes me happy a little bit. But, um, um, I'm hearing, one, I really want to go right to the PCIA. The devastating im- impacts of that can be, can, can be really challenging. And I, I think, um, I'm hearing some, some rumblings though, that there is some possible changes, that this might, um, that some organizations are going to be moving forward against the state to try to get this changed. Are you hearing anything like that, Ty?
Yeah, I, I mean, I have heard some, some bits and pieces about that and I've had some individual discussions with some folks at other programs and other regulatory attorneys and, and other, you know, and other attorneys from the program. And so, um, I, there, there is some discussion. I think that the fresh, it's fair to say the frustration is building over, over the PCIA. You know, un- unfortunately, we're not seeing a lot of progress being made in the, uh, PCIA Working Group Three, effort, uh, that has been underway for quite some time now. And we're just not seeing the kind of progress that we'd like to see, uh, on that front. Uh, and so I think, I think quite naturally, people are turning to, uh, thinking about other alternatives. And I, I, I do think, um, that, you know, that would be probably be a best subject, uh, probably a subject that's best discussed also in a closed session or in one-on-ones with, uh, with the board members, um, just due to the, you know, delicate nature of
Yeah.
of some of those, uh, strategies that are being discussed and so forth. But yeah, I, 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 I can get to like confirm, you know, yes to your question.
Okay, great. That's good to hear, Ty. And I'm, I, I am, I am getting lots of questions about that. So I, I am very interested in, um, any more information that you can provide to us in any way we can
Sure.
get that out. So, and then last, uh, my next question is, so the, the bundled customers refund. So obviously, no one who is a bundled customer has any idea about this. I, I feel like this is, if, if we don't make this an issue, um, this is just going to go by the wayside in SDG&E. And he's like, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be bad. I'm just saying that, um, is there any way that, that we can help these bundled customers be aware that there is a refund due to them? Because I think a lot of them won't know that right away. I mean, what are your thoughts on that, Ty?
Yeah, that's a, you know, that's a good question. Um, you know, outreach to customers traditionally not been my area, Director West. But I, I certainly think that, uh, you know, we could post something on the site, a notice or something like that. Um, it would be kind of one obvious thing to do. I, I could certainly, you know, we could certainly, um, uh, provide some content on that front. In terms of getting the message out, um, I'm probably not the right person to, to ask about that. But certainly, certainly we could put the, put something together to, 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 to show, you know, what the impact is, what the issues are and so forth.
Yeah, Ty, that's exactly what I was, I was just driving you down this road. So I'm actually was going to say, yes, let's have you put something together, get it to Bill, get it to the interim CEO and get some information out so people are aware of it. So thank you very much, Ty. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Perfect. And, and Ty, perhaps you can work with Bill. You know, we, we always have, uh, maybe like, uh, we can meet maybe perhaps at our next meeting at four and we can have an hour of closed session to discuss some, some of the matters that Director West was talking about as well, that you think are sensitive. And, you know, we could always utilize that hour before our board meeting. So.
Be glad to.
Director McCann, your, your hand is up. Uh, did you have a question or a comment?
I don't have a question here. Just, uh, appreciate the updates. And I think, um, I don't have my hand up, but, uh, I don't know if it's still, I'll have to lower it. There we go. Thank you.
All right, it's down now. All right. Um, do any other questions or comments by my, uh, colleagues?
Yes.
All right, sorry.
Chair, I, I just, I just put my hand up, so I don't, I don't know if you saw that or not. Sometimes it takes a minute. But I also just want to say, um, thank you, uh, for the presentation, all of the hard, hard work by all of the presenters, John, Bill, Cody, uh, and Ty. And, you know, most of my questions have been answered. I have, I still have concerns about the computer system. But with us getting an agendized item on that, I think it will help a lot with, uh, some of our anxiety around that. I, I just want to make sure that we're, we are on track, um, with that. And so I know a lot of work is going on behind the scenes and, um, I'm looking forward to that agendized item. In addition, um, I don't know how, how one makes an eighty-two million dollar mistake, but I'm glad that it was found. So, uh, that was, um, good to see. Also, um, the PCIA issue, of course, um, is ongoing and we're continually hearing about this because we know that it has a high potential to affect our future customers. So, um, thanks for keeping us in the loop on that. And then my last, it, it was going to be a question, but it was answered. And we will also have an agendized item around, um, low-income customers and potential burden for them especially. And so I was going to ask a question about that, but I look forward to discussing that. So thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Miss Montgomery.
Thank you. Um, Megan, are there any public comments on this item?
There are none.
All right. Ryan, I saw your hand up. Did you want to say anything before we move on to the next item?
No, I, I, I just wanted to clarify, we, the, for some of these topics, a closed session may or may not be available just for the public record. So we'll, we will look at this and decide what the appropriate vehicle is.
All right, I'll, I'll leave it to you. I mean, I think when, when, um, directors make comments about needing more information, I'll leave it to you and, and Ty and, and Bill to decide what the correct and proper vehicle is.
Thank you.
Perfect. I think that this was a receive and file, so, um, we will receive and file that. Move on to the next item and the next item is, um, sorry, just trying to get the, uh, next item is item number five, update of amended organizational chart and staffing plan. I believe this is, uh, your item, Bill?
Yes, it is. Thank you. Uh, you know, shortly, uh, in fact, the last meeting, you all adopted what I would call an interim staffing plan, basically as a placeholder, uh, and, and recognize that as we grow and change, it might, uh, need some revisions along the way. Uh, and so when I came, I took a look at it, it, it was not exactly what I thought we might need. And also, I felt there was some urgency to get it right, uh, because we did have some, uh, solicitations on the street to hire a couple of people. And, uh, it, it appeared to me, we weren't quite ready for that. Not the least of which is we didn't even really have a fringe benefit package either to be able to talk about compensation for folks. So I, uh, solicited Sean Marshall, basically. So she and I could, uh, take a look at what other CCAs, how they were organized, what were the common threads? What were the uniquenesses and the differences? And then we would take a look at modifying our org chart as a starting point. Uh, and then from there, we would move to job descriptions and salaries and fr- fringe benefits from there. So this is really sort of the first step of, of, of completing that, uh, process. And, um, in comparing and looking and contrasting, we actually, uh, proposed a fairly sweeping but fairly simple change in the org, org chart. Uh, and that is to actually, as you can see from the discussions today, the power resource, uh, area is one that is very, very important to us. It's our core business really. Uh, and we needed to make sure that, uh, uh, it got the, the attention, uh, that it needed and it should, in fact, uh, in, in most cases is, is a direct report to the CEO so that we have a direct line of communication there and can focus their efforts on, on what is our core business. So that's really the, the, the major and almost only change. Uh, we are still operating with a chief operating officer concept. Uh, it has a variety of activities, but I think they're much closer aligned than if you put the power supply group under that, which is where it was before. So that's what I'm, I, I am proposing that we do as a change. I then, uh, in, in developing the chart, I wanted to take a look at not just what, where we are today. I mean, we're going to be growing and changing and, and staffing up as we get prepared to start serving customers. So I took a look at the budget and this year's budget actually indicated by the end of the year, we ought to have, uh, seven or eight folks on board. Uh, and then another, uh, uh, eight or ten, uh, at the end of the next budget year. So there was provision in the budget to, uh, to give us some, some heads up in terms of staffing levels. And so then I took a look at, at those, uh, numbers and took a look at the positions that we, that we're going to have and, uh, worked backwards in terms of prioritizing how we add those folks. And they're not all at any level, they're, they're throughout the organization. And so you'll, you'll notice that there are nine positions identified, which is where we, we should be at the end of this budget year. And then that during the budget process, we can take a look at how we fill out the, uh, year two and, and, and the funds needed for that. So, so we would be ready to undertake that process really starting in November and ma- making those staff additions at a, at really a fairly rapid pace, which is consistent with what CCAs do as they, as they staff up to be a real operating entities. And so I, I think now we have a roadmap, uh, of where we want it to be at least the next couple of years. These things get changed as conditions change, so it's not really cast in concrete. But I think it gives us, uh, a good direction and, and a, a, a way to start, uh, acquiring the talent that we need to do the job in a systematic way and in, in terms of, of what's needed and when. Uh, the other part of it is that we will continue that now to, to do job descriptions and salary comparisons. And, uh, Tom Makowski of, of Encinitas has been very, very helpful to us, particularly starting this process in the area of the fringe benefit package. And I'm going to ask him to, to present, I hope he's on, the, uh, the results of his work. And then we'll move into the, uh, salary survey work, which he's, uh, offered to, to have his folks assist us in as well. So, uh, I think we're on the way to, to getting a, a, a good sound base of, and structure underneath, uh, the entity so that we can move on with some confidence that we're, we're doing it in the right way to meet the needs and, you know, sort of, uh, grow our own talent and, and re- reduce the need, uh, for as many consultants. Uh, we'll still have them. They still serve a purpose, but we have to selectively, uh, pick where we use them. And so, uh, this, this should be the roadmap to get us, uh, started down that track. So I think with that, uh, unless you have any questions, uh, I'll be happy to answer those and we can move on to, to, uh, actually item six, uh, which is the, the fringe benefit package. So I would recommend, uh, actually the board doesn't have to approve the, uh, the reorg plan because I think the resolution you passed last time sort of gave me the authority to do that. But I, I wouldn't do that without getting input from you all and showing you where we're going and where we're proposing to go. So I would be happy to, to entertain any thoughts or questions or criticisms or whatever of, of the proposed plan.
All right, any questions, um, by my colleagues for, um, for our CEO? I see, uh, Director Montgomery, Steve, um, you have your hand up or is that from before?
That's from before. Sorry about that.
Director West?
Yeah, just, um, um, interim CEO, um, Bill, I love that you're putting your fingerprint on this. I love that you jumped right in and immediately saw some things you think would work better and have moved forward with that. So, um, yeah, I, I think I've, I've looked at it. I think it looked great. And, uh, I also agree to you that these org charts are, are meant to be, uh, changed and updated as we grow. And, um, so I'm, I'm appreciative of the work you've done and I look forward to it as it grows beyond. So thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just underscore Director West's comments. I think that, that, you know, when we, when we passed the last kind of, um, when we, when we put together the last org chart and even the org chart before that, um, you know, it was, it was kind of more general and it wasn't real, really specific to, uh, different staff members that have different strengths. And so, um, so I, I think that, you know, I fully understood that this wasn't etched in stone and that, that at some point, uh, we would amend it. I would imagine we would amend it several more times, uh, before, you know, the next several years, um, is up. Because, uh, you know, we're growing and, and, and experiencing different situations. And, you know, I think that, you know, it almost seems like I'm kind of looking at this and thinking that you almost, uh, understood the conversation tonight before we even had it. Uh, I think highlighting, you know, director of power services being a kind of a, um, you know, it just stands out on this org chart as, as critically important. And obviously it is critically important. And, um, and so I, I, I really appreciate that kind of being, you know, separated out and being, um, somebody that's reporting, uh, directly to the CEO, uh, because that's important. All right, any other, uh, comments, um, for our, our interim CEO? Megan, do we have any public comments on item number five?
We do not.
All right, then we will move on to item number, um, let's see. Yeah, I'm just trying to find, um, move on to number, number, item number, uh, six, which is receive, update and provide direction and authorization regarding San Diego Community Power Employee Benefits Program. And this is, uh, my favorite, uh, Encinitas employee.
Thank you.
Tom Makowski.
Uh, good evening Chair Mosca and, uh, directors. Yeah, item six is a review of an employee benefit design that we developed based on really what our core common employee benefits. You know, I, I got some input from our benefit consultant, um, and also the comparison, uh, benefits that are provided to similar, um, agencies. So we, you know, we, we, we got some input from a few, few areas. But after I do the, the review of the plan design, you know, if the board has any questions or input, we'd love to hear back from you guys. And, and, um, also asking, uh, to give the CEO authority to implement a, like a final plan design and negotiate, uh, the contracts with the, with the providers. And with that, some of the contracts and plan documents will be required to go back to the board for approval. So that's kind of what we've, we've laid out with that. So, um, that's, you know, what my presentation on item six is going to be. So, so, yeah, thank you, Sebastian. Even the next slide, maybe? So I, I, I look at the employee benefit plans that I can afford, four categories. One are the, really the core health benefits, uh, retirement, uh, time off. And then there's some miscellaneous benefits that, uh, make up the, the benefit plan that I'm presenting tonight. Next slide. You know, the, the health cafeteria plan is really the core, uh, benefit. And we're, I'm recommending a, a, a kind of a traditional cafeteria health plan, which would provide an employee, you know, the employees a stipend per month to purchase, you know, medical dental vision. Employees can select the type of plan, you know, PPR, HMO and, and the coverage level that they need for them or their families. And the recommendation I received from our benefit consultant is also provide a, a, an opt-out incentive because they may not need coverage through our group plan but have coverage elsewhere. So it could save, um, you know, the, save us, uh, some monies on, on, on the healthcare. And also to include, you know, tax-qualified, uh, flexible spending options for healthcare, um, dependent care. And that plan also would, would allow employees to pay for their premiums, uh, pre-tax. So that's kind of the, the, the structure of the health plan that we're, we're looking at. And then the next slide, Sebastian, I think is the, uh, the retirement. You know, employees are going to be required, it's mandatory for them to participate in social security and Medicare. But it's quite common, uh, and almost, you know, uh, needed in, in nowadays to provide some sort of supplemental retirement plan. And what we've seen from other employers is you're looking at employer contributions of about ten percent. And many have vesting schedules, which are really an incentive to retain employees. And vesting schedules could be like twenty percent immediately invested in, uh, vested the first year with twenty 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 until year 2020, 20 until year five, they're 100% invested. So that's something we're looking at. Um, and I'll be talking to Bill more about how to design that so we can attract and retain employees. And the other part of the um, retirement plan is voluntary contribution. So we would set up a a plan to allow employees to contribute voluntarily up to IRS limits uh, tax qual- into tax qualified plans. And that that's an example of a plan document that would have to go back to the board for approval once we have that uh, ready, which doesn't really take a lot of time. Um, you know, those those documents are pretty much standard. And, you know, I can put those together and bring it back to the board for for adoption. So we're ready to have those uh, when we hire the the first employees. I think the the next slide, the yeah, this slide is a little busy. Um, but I wanted to give uh, the board a kind of a look at really what the time off recommendation is. So you can see the holidays and the and the paid time off. You know, on the right side, you know, a a pretty standard, you know, 11 day uh, holiday policy, you know, New Year's, New Year's Eve. And I'm not going to read each one, but a a pretty standard holiday package. And then for time off, um, you know, I, you know, I'm looking at some sort of uh, tiered uh, vesting. You know, uh, two weeks pay time off the first year, then year year three, you you get a a another another week. And then after after year five, um, 160 hours. Uh, the sick leave that I I threw in there was pretty standard. It's about eight hours a month you would accrue for sick leave. And, you know, that would be capped, uh, you know, typically. Then other leave, um, exempt staff that may work overtime or or, you know, board meetings, for example. Um, you know, give them, you know, 80 hours of admin leave. So if they need to take time off to, you know, for for, you know, school or whatever they need to do for their kids, you know, admin leave is pretty common. And for the non-exempts, you know, they for any overtime would be paid, you know, per FLSA rules or laws. Uh, and then you also see that in terms of form of cop time, where they can take time off later on if they chose to. So those are all pretty standard, you know, um, leave packages that that I put together for for you to consider tonight. Or uh, if you have any questions, you know, you let me know. And then the the last slide, Sebastian, is uh, really some miscellaneous or ancillary benefits, which are typically paid by the employer, such as a basic life policy, uh, a long term disability policy, employee assistance program. And then what we also saw on comparison for some other agencies is many are offering incentives to use alternative transportation, such as uh, train or bus or or other ways to get cars off the road. And um, a technology assistance of about $100 is what we're seeing out there. Um, AKA cellphone allowance, if you will. So that's the pretty basic, I think, uh, benefit plan. But 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 I think it will help us be competitive to recruit and retain employees. And with that, um, Chair Mosca, if you or the other directors have any questions or comments, I'm glad to answer anything I can.
Perfect, thank you, Tom. Um, and so talk a little bit about the the various agencies and and organizations that you've kind of um, looked at to to kind of determine uh, what is what is um, what is market? What is what is uh, competitive?
Yeah, what I would like, I what I would need to do, there's attachment A that's on the staff report. And that was the uh, comparison that um, Sean had put together. And I gotta, I got, I'm trying to multitask here and pull that up real quick.
It looks like it's uh, it says San Diego, so I assume that's uh, city of San Diego.
Yeah.
Correct.
And CPA, uh, Clean Power Alliance and um, uh, MBCP and E C.
Well, that's Monterey Bay and it's now Central Coast.
All right.
Okay.
Right, so essentially, it was um, it was the city of San Diego and and a few other um, CCEs in the state of California.
Yes.
Uh, I'm also happy to uh, pull that up on the screen if you'll prefer.
That'd be great, Sebastian, thank you.
Yeah. Give me one. And then in terms of, um, Tom, in terms of the healthcare, so um, essentially our CEO and you guys, you guys would negotiate with different healthcare providers. Um, but essentially, the the employee would get $1,200. Um, and they would be able to spend that on um, whatever uh, uh, healthcare insurance, healthcare that they would want to have. Um, and then whatever, you know, if the program is 2,000, if the the cost of the healthcare is 2,000, then the $800 would be the employee contribution.
That's correct.
All right. And then if if um, if there, if if they had insurance elsewhere or if their spouse had insurance, um, then um, then you you talked a little bit about the flex spending. So would they be able to, is that, um, would they be able to take some portion of that $1,200 and use it for flex spending?
They they could. We could structure the plans so they can use some of that cafeteria stipend to put into flex spending. Um, and I don't know what the actual limitations are off the top of my head, but because of ACA, there are some rules that limits the amount you could put in um, to comply with the affordability provisions. But there is that opportunity, yes.
All right. And then there's um, in addition to um, so in addition to the um, the um, 10% employer um, salary match, and that's for, is that a 401K or?
It it it, correct. It's a 401K type plan um, for uh, government entities. They, the IRS has a different uh, uh, plan, it's called a 457 or 401A. But yes, it's it's typically like a 401K type um, defined contribution benefit.
All right, I thought it was um, I thought we were talking about two different uh, um, retirement plans, a 401, 403B or and then a 457. But it's 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 one retirement plan that we would be contributing to.
Correct.
All right, perfect. Um, let me see, anybody, um, let me just go in order here. Director West, do you have questions or comments?
I do. Um, I just want to go to the holiday section. And I I I'm gonna make a, throw something out here that I currently work at is that um, and this has given me a lot of freedom and I think it's really been, I I really enjoy it, is that they, um, instead of giving all 11 of those holidays off, they give um, um, you have six of them, the primary holidays like Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Year's, um, Fourth of July, the the major holidays are always off. But then you get five floating ones and it makes it, and you can take those anytime you want. I I it gives some um, freedom that uh, I think is, I've really enjoyed it with my own current employee employment. So something to think out, think about that's a little bit different. Um, not necessarily just giving them all the holidays, but um, they could, they could pick five, five days that they could take off anytime. So it's something I like, but um, I'm just throwing it out there and seeing if there's any anybody else would like that. And I also love, I think, one of the things that we're seeing in the city of Imperial Beach, and I know all cities are are seeing is that, you know, the pandemic has opened up the uh, kind of, we need to figure out ways for alternative transportation and also working from home can be done. And and I and I didn't see that in our um, in our package here. And I wonder if there is, um, I obviously want to keep the alternative transportation incentive, but I also want to see if there's, um, as we identify positions that don't need to come in the office, I think we should uh, incentivize people to stay at home and work.
Yeah, I I I can make a quick comment on that. I I left the scheduling uh, out intentionally, because I really think that's something that the CEO can can implement um, in terms of flexible schedules or telecommuting, like, we're doing that now, I think most employers are. Um, because there there is a, there is a big need for it, obviously with COVID. And um, you know, I think going forward, even after we're through this COVID, you know, crisis, um, we're going to do business differently. And I think I think you're going to see employees wanting and staying home. And it's working really well in in many instances. So I really didn't put it in the in the play benefit, even though it is kind of a a a work-life balance issue. I think it's something that that we could implement um, very easily.
And then, yeah, thank you, Tom. Thank you very much. And then last but not least, I think one of the things that we're seeing, and I think all of us are, is this, the impact on working moms is 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 one of the hardest things we're having to deal with. And I think there should be something in here in our employee package that, you know, we will do everything in our power to make sure that um, if if your student is had to be, if we have to continue to work from work from uh, home or school from home, that we will make every opportunity to make that uh, transition very easy for them. So, and I know these are, these are kind of details that the CEO can work out, but I'd like to see it to work. It's in our package, we're thinking about it because we want to be a friendly work environment for all.
No, those are all fair points, Director West. I I think it's fair to bring it up right now and and that Bill and Tom are are hearing it.
Yes.
In fact, Tom, I think we're doing something in the city of Encinitas in that.
We we are. And I I think many employers are. And we definitely can include that in our um, package. You know, when we recruit and advertise for employees and we can make sure they understand that we are um, flexible. And we're we're looking at ways to make sure we can um, give them that work-life balance is what I'm term comes to my mind. But yes, I mean, it's a reality too. We we have to do it. It's not like, not much we have a choice.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director West. Uh, Director Himora.
Thank you. I, thanks for the presentation, Tom, and gathering that information, appreciate it. I would be supportive of Director West's comments with respect to the the time off. I think that's good to to add the flexibility in there. I think that's that's a good comment, appreciate that. Um, and then just a couple, couple of follow-ups. Regarding the the opt-out incentive, have you thought about, you know, what the monthly dollar value potentially might be with respect to that? For the medical coverage?
Yeah, what we see is typically between $500 and $600 a month, which is about half of what the cafeteria amount would be.
Yeah, my my suggestion there would just be to err on the caution of the lower side of that with respect to it. Um, because, you know, just something to take, take a look at there. And then, quick question with respect to the cellphone provision that was put in there. Um, it says cellphone and then allowance or technology. Is the 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 $100, that's not meant to also include a cellphone, is it?
No.
Um, no, it's 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 typically to cover the the monthly service. You know, someone's someone's cellphone. And you know, the the other equipment, such as laptops and those sorts of things. Um, you know, all is going on the basis that's provided by the employer. You know, like the the equipment I'm using tonight, you know, I'm at home, is provided by the city to me to use.
Yeah, I appreciate that that clarification. I would just, and I agree with that. I would just caution against trying to buy employees' cellphones. That's not something we want to get in the practice of, because you don't want people carrying two cellphones.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Director McCann?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I agree with the floating um, holiday idea that Director West brought up. Many times, uh, people may want to celebrate different holidays that may not be the main holidays. And it gives them the opportunity to use those floating holidays uh, for those times. Uh, the other thing is is working from home. Uh, many of my employees, uh, when they work from home, they're twice as productive. So that should be a good opportunity. But also, some employees, when they do work at home, they aren't as productive. Uh, they get distracted by too many different things, uh, from uh, their family to different projects at home, things like that. Uh, and I think it's best to let the Chief Operating Officer be able to determine um, how they should be able to structure that. And managers and supervisors determine on what level their employees can. We should definitely should have that as an option. Uh, but also, it should be managed more by the person who's actually managing the employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Um, Megan, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not.
All right. Tom, did you, uh, Tom and Bill, do you have the the feedback that you need?
We do. I mean, I I think the, you know, modifying that the leaves, so you have the the floating holidays as opposed to the fix is a good idea. And we'll make sure that we emphasize in our recruitment about the the ability to to work from home and flexibility. I I think that was a good, good input.
Perfect, all right. Um, and then part of uh, item six was also um, um, the need for authorization. So I'll entertain a motion uh, at this time to approve that authorization for our CEO.
I'll move the item, uh, Chair, but just a a couple of of quick things. Um, one is, I just want to concur with Director McCann around setting uh, fluid schedule with folks uh, working home from home and in office. I think we're, as we're, what, nine months into the pandemic, we're seeing that um, that people are productive at home, but also that there is uh, something missing with not always being able to be in a space, kind of especially if we're starting something newer. This uh, industry is extremely fluid, um, things happen. And, you know, sometimes there's an advantage, as long as it's safe to kind of be in those those spaces. So just want to put that out there. And just, this is, uh, this is related, a little bit of a tangent, but want to make sure that as we're doing our recruitment, just generally speaking, that we're doing it casting a wide net. And we're doing it so that we have, uh, one of our goals is always to have a diverse um, uh, crew. And so uh, we want to make sure that that happens, especially at the employment level. Because so far, you know, contractually, we haven't been able to do that as much, frankly. And and we want to make sure that we're putting that effort and intentionality behind that. So, but I move the item with that said, thanks.
All right. Great, great points, Monica. And and
Check in the item.
Thank you, Director McCann. And also, in the beginning, um, I know that at some point, we'll we'll get more information from from Bill about uh, space. Uh, but in the beginning, we'll be slow to kind of, you know, um, to to occupy space. And and also, I I, you know, the the first initial hires are going to be high-level uh, professionals uh, that I think that we can um, trust to do their job um, remotely. Um, so, you know, CEO, CFO and and Director Power sources. So, uh, but certainly, um, those were, those comments will be certainly relevant as we move forward, uh, especially into the next fiscal year. So, all right, we have a motion and a second by Director McCann.
Uh, Director West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Himora, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McCann, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, let's move on to the seventh and last item, approval of CCA terms and conditions in substantive form. Um, I see your name attached to this, Sebastian, so are you going to uh, take this?
Yes, Chair.
All right.
Um, this is a uh, a piece of policy that is commonplace uh, with other CCAs. Uh, this is something that is done uh, typically prior before the enrollment notices hit. Um, and since ours are coming up, uh, it is time for us to to uh, develop this policy. Uh, the reason why it's in substantive form is that we're working with uh, Calpine Energy Solutions to develop certain small items in the uh, attachment that is part of the staff report. And uh, those include uh, what our product names will be, uh, as well as our customer service phone number. Um, in general, I uh, I looked at uh, other copies for Peninsula Clean Energy, Clean Power Alliance, Desert Community Energy and a few others. I also uh, run this, ran this through uh, Paul Sacco. He is with Calpine Energy Solutions to make sure that we were capturing the best information uh, that we could. Um, so this policy, to give you a little bit more context, uh, will be included in the enrollment notices. Uh, so um, we're required to send a total of four notices to our customers for each space, uh, two before, two after. And as part of those notices, uh, this wording needs to be in there. So our customers know about billing information, enrollment, uh, how they can opt out if they choose to do so, uh, etc. So um, again, it's a pretty straightforward policy, uh, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sebastian. So um, one of the, one of the uh, key terms that that we need to fill in um, is the the product. So um, are we still, um, I don't know if this is a question for for Bill or who, uh, but are we still on track for, um, we talked about in our 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 initial filing with the PUC, uh, 50 to 60% renewable energy, uh, and of course, an opt-up to 100% renewable energy. So are we still, um, is that still going to be the product for SDCP once we launch?
Uh, that is being finalized. I can let Bill chime in. Uh, but what staff is working on is to bring uh, final product names and offerings uh, for your approval. Uh, November, uh, next month's meeting. We're currently finalizing that information. We have civilian working hard on, on what those names will look like. And we're also having conversations with John and Kirby on those two product offerings, whether it'll include more technical information than, than I can pretend to know. But yes, we're planning to bring that forward in November and I think that answers your question, but, but Bill, please, if you want to chime in.
So Sebastian, when you say the name, so you're saying that, just to be clear, so when you're saying, you're saying that instead of me saying 50 to 60%, we would, we would name that like this is the, 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 the green offering or something, we would, civilian would come up with a fancy, a, a name for that, that 50 to 60%. Or if it's 55% or 60%, wherever it falls, we, you're saying that civilians looking at, coming up with a name for that. That's what you mean by name?
That's correct. Yes.
All right. I didn't understand that. All right. Perfect. Bill, were you going to say something?
Bill, you're muted.
Why do I do that? So I, I think we can safely say we're going to have at least two offerings and maybe three. And we're trying to figure out, and I think the two you, you mentioned, Chair Moscow is, is, is the two that we currently are the base, if you will. And we're, we're exploring the options of whether there's any others that customers might be interested in. And it gets, it gets a little bit technical, but it could, there is a difference between 100% renewables and 100% greenhouse gas. You know, zero percent. So, but that's get kind of technical. We don't know what the demand is going to be. And so we're going to try to scope out some of those things and give you the pros and cons and then come back. And actually, as a policy decision, you all can make that decision based upon, you know, what we have found out in terms of the impacts, et cetera. So, you know, we, we're teeing that up for, for next month.
Good. I mean, I, I, I remember going back to the, one of the first meetings. Sebastian was talking about the first meeting tonight. I remember the first meeting and that we had, we talked about the potential for three offerings. I know Clean Power Alliance has that, though their IOU is, is, is lower in terms of RPS. And so it made sense for them, but I do that, that, you know, if we're settling around 50% because we, we, you know, prioritize that default amount, then, then, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have something in between 100%. You know, once again, kind of connecting to the topic of, of really, you know, the constraint environment within San Diego, if we are, you know, moving people to a higher amount, say in between 50 and 75%, 50 and 100%, are we giving even more cues to the marketplace that, that this, this region is interested in more renewable energy, isn't it? And is it helping us with that constraint? And so I'd leave that to you. I'd also just want to say that my colleagues on the city council in Encinitas have brought up several times that they would like to discuss an opt-out, a, a default amount for the city of Encinitas at 100%. And so I'd love to have that discussion at some point where individual cities can pass resolutions, have their own discussion and pass a resolution if they want to, to enroll all of their residents at 100%. And then, you know, potentially have a default to SDCP's default product or whatever product SDCP offers, if they'd like to default to that. Or of course, while I wouldn't want them to, but, but they could also default to the IOU.
And, and I think that's, that's of interest too, because there, the cities will have to adopt a default rate of whether it's one of the two or one of the three, because there are going to be customers. It's, it's a proactive opt-out or proactive rate decision on behalf of the customers. And some of those customers just aren't going to do that. And if they don't do that, you have to have a rate to put them in so you can send them a bill. And so you do have to decide and, and we will give you the background and all that stuff for you all to go back and have discussions with sufficient time for your city councils to go through whatever kind of process they would like to go through to, to make that decision. But they, they will have to make a default where if customers, and I don't know, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head what the percentage is, but it, it could be a fairly high number in some communities because they did, it's just not on their radar screen. And so we will, we will make that a part of the discussion as well.
Great, great. Yeah. I, I emphasized that, but I didn't realize that that was the case. So I guess it, it's going to come be before us anyways. And so I didn't, I didn't realize that that was the case.
Now you have to take an action of some kind.
All right. Perfect. All right. Well, I'm satisfied then. Any comments or questions by my colleagues? Director West, your hands up. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'm very happy that you're satisfied, Chair Moscow. It just made the entire evening. So, no, but um, yeah. The, I, the city of Imperial Beach is very interested in going the same route you are, the city of Encinitas is going and making a higher default rate. So just wanted to concur that there is, there is an appetite in other cities as well. And then, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
And good. I mean, I think that that really does, that potentially sends a, a great signal to the marketplace, to the market that, that, that this area really, you know, it's constrained and we want more renewable energy.
Yep. Completely agree.
Director Himmora, your hands up. Would you like to make a comment or ask a question?
Sorry, my hand needs to be lowered. I will lower it now. But I, I too am very happy that you are satisfied, Chair Moscow.
All right. We will never use that adjective again. I will think of a different adjective.
You are bad about your hands going up, but Dallas, I am muting my microphone.
Technology is your friend.
All right. So do we need, we need a motion on this or is this just, Sebastian, is this just showing us what it's looking like? And, and, and you've gotten your input and you're, you're, you're satisfied?
Thank you, Chair. I do need a motion from you all. Both moved.
Second, West?
All right. We have a motion and we have a second.
Director West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Himmora, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McCann, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion passes with all directors voting yes.
And Megan, I assume that there, I didn't call for public comment, but I assume that since you didn't jump in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's no public comment.
All right. Perfect. Perfect. All right. So we are at the end of our agenda. So I'm going to move to director comments. Are there any directors that like, would like to make a comment right now? Not seeing anybody jump up. Reports by our CEO or, or it says management. So I, I suppose anybody CEO or anybody in management can make a comment.
That's a, that's a little scary, but I, only to say that our, our main takeaway today is to try to set up a meeting next week so that you all can discuss in more detail what's happening with RA and those kinds of things. So we will do that.
And yeah, perfect. Yeah. I, I don't think anything else needs to be said, but that, that sounds, that sounds great.
Reminder, we're going to do it.
All right. And Ryan, did you want to say anything? Do you have any report from General Counsel?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
All right, General Counsel. Thank you.
Director McCann does have his hand up. Sorry.
Director McCann?
Very much, Chair. I just wanted to say it was a pleasure being the alternate, alternate director and being able to act as director. I really appreciate what everybody is doing. Great discussion today. Bill, I, I appreciate you filling in and doing a great job. And we all have to continue to work very, very diligently to make this successful. I think there are a lot of people who are cheering us and hoping for us the best. I think there's also a side out there unfortunately, that's hoping that we won't, won't be successful. So we have to continue to be diligent, do our best work and our best job to make this a success. This is like a startup company and I think if we do it right, it will be incredibly successful. So thank you.
Thank you, Director McCann. Thank you for those comments and thank you for filling in today. Hopefully you can come to other meetings and maybe we can get you involved in, in other committees as well. All right. So that, that's it for all the comments and I'm going to adjourn the meeting and the next meeting is, is, is November 19th.
Yes.
That's the fourth Thursday, November 19th? Or oh, it's the third Thursday.
The third, because of the holiday, it, it was part of our original schedule that we adopted in January or December of last year. So the last two meetings of, of the year are the third Thursday.
Perfect. Yeah. We don't want to meet on Thanksgiving. All right. Thank you, guys. Bye.
You all, bye.
Bye. Thank you.